Alrighty, ask everybody to silence their cell phones. So we don't get all distractions during the meeting. Start off number two, special presentations and or announcements. This time is informational presentations, appointments or awards presented by the city council to, to or to the city council. In this case, it's a, it's an award. Presentation award that we're going to give to Meeks. And I think we have a, a person here from Meeks. This is just a great, this is to show our gratitude. On the skateboard park, which I think Corey could maybe talk briefly about it real quickly.
Briefly, okay. Well, as I don't know if anybody saw, the skateboard park has been completed on Minor Street with the improvements that we were, well, to afford to the city. And also, Meeks reached out to me. Once he saw the article in the paper and I shared it on my Facebook and asked if there was anything they could do, um, to help out and they stepped up and donated, several supplies that really saved us and that we wouldn't have the funds otherwise to do so. So I really appreciate them to have them as a community partner and help the kids at the skateboard park to enjoy for several years. So thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate helping out.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
We've just been in the community since 1997 and any, anything that we can do to help out the community, that's, that's part of our job here. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have this, this certificate of recognition. I'd like actually Corey to present this to you, even though it's generally the mayor and that's it. But Corey is the one that spearheaded this project. So if you want to walk around. And I don't know if somebody wants to get a picture. I could take a picture.
Yeah, why, Lance?
How do you say, make it a phone call? I just wanted to. I know Mike actually has, he let me know when, that he has other arrangements this evening, but he made time to make it by here. But they did, Meeks donated, they donated five sheets of three eighths inch plywood that allowed us that the half pipe came where the, it was open ended on both ends, which was going to be a likely spot for vandalism. But those five sheets of plywood were able to enclose the back and reinforce it, actually made the half pipe stronger. Then they donated a, a two inch hole saw. So we could cut fence in so it could breathe in there and not create mildew. Then they donated two sheets of, um, five millimeter mahogany to redo the quarter pipe and a sheet of, five millimeter birch for the little fun box.
All right on.
And the cost of plywood is really high right now.
It's not cheap right now. Oh my goodness.
It was an absolutely awesome donation. So thank you.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you so much. So appreciate it. The kids will appreciate it.
It looks great. The job.
They did amazing job. Thank you.
The kids are using it already.
Yes. Oh yeah. Every day, every day they're using it. Thank you, sir. Have a great.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, go into public comments. This is a time for public comments regarding issues or matters, not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the city council of Warrica. Public comments period is not intended for question and answer period, or conversations with the council or city staff. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but may take no action, by the city council during the public's comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place a few item on future agenda. Please speak to the podium. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Alrighty.
Lorenzo Love. Uh, you need to make a decision on the pedestrian controlled traffic light by Valera before it gets too late. Because the normal process of procrastination here, they're going to run out of time.
So actually we are, we are addressing that, just so you know. We actually have a meeting come this Thursday and it'll address part of that. It's a Caltrans meeting. Be here at six thirty. So if you want to be here and, and voice in on that, that's great. We are, we are going to be addressing it though. So thank you.
Good.
Yes, with Caltrans. Thank you, Lorenzo.
He's destroying the place as I get here. I don't know where I'm at, but since they're busy on calls, I thought I would do a public comment, just to introduce our new guy. Alright, so for, I'm Chief Mark Gilman. This is our new police officer, John Custer. He comes from Southern California. He worked for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And he's been with us just a couple of weeks now. So I, I introduce him to all you guys. This is our, most of our council. I'm missing a couple of people.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sean.
Yeah, happy to be here. A lot nicer to be on a smaller department.
We have an action packed city lately, so. So you'll fit right in.
He was a little surprised.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Mark. That's awesome. Appreciate it. Thank you for stepping up.
And welcome to the community.
Yes. Alrighty, is there any other public comments? If there's anything on the Zoom or anything, is there? Okay. Alrighty, then we shall, there's other, other comments. We'll move on to consent calendars. All matters, consent calendar are considered routine and non controversial and will be enacted in one motion unless the member of the council wishes, to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audio, a public wishes to comment on an item. A, approval ratification of payments issued from July twenty sixth, twenty twenty one through August eighth, twenty twenty one. E, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on August third, twenty twenty one. C, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on August fifth, twenty twenty one. D, continuation of urgency number eight fifty five COVID nineteen, which we've never heard of that one. E, continuation of urgency, no, ordinance number eight sixty four fireworks. Uh, F, waive full text readings on of all ordinance on the agenda. Ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Is there any comments before we get into this? Not then, I will.
Mayor K, this is Councilman McCoy.
Yes, sir.
At the bottom, at the bottom, it shows that you directed the city manager to bring minutes of the regular meeting, held on July twentieth, twenty twenty one, back to the council of this next meeting, which would have been this meeting and that with the consensus of the council. Can we continue that since I know the city manager is not feeling well? Can we continue that and ask for that at our next, our first September meeting?
Which one's this? I'm sorry. Just A?
F, go to, go to F.
Oh, F.
Go to F, F, and then go down to the bottom of five F, which is Mayor Keg directed the city manager.
Okay. Five F.
We asked for the full minutes to come back. So we could, and, and, and I'm not, and he's, and our, city manager Johnson is not feeling well. I understand that. So I'm hoping that we can continue that part. Uh, and have him brought back for the first September meeting.
Yeah.
Cause they're obviously not, they're not in this package.
Right. We obviously didn't bring that back. We can, how about we just approve this as is, but we still just, make a request that he brings that back at the next city council meeting? Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just asking that you continue that. That's the only thing I'm asking that you continue.
Continue. I think that's appropriate.
Protocol.
I think that's.
I, I can't. Yeah, I can't hear what's being said other than you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Um, so she basically, um, Joan Smith Freeman requested that we move ahead with the minutes and have, and request at the end of the meeting for, um, city manager to bring that back at the next meeting.
That's, I'm just asking for that to be continued for the next meeting. Yes. That's in fact what I'm asking for. It's actually not part of the consent agenda really. But I'm asking your, your indulgence as the mayor that you would, uh, that since we decided on it as a consensus of the council, that, uh, you would direct the city manager to bring it back at our first September meeting to us. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry. I did hear you. Yes. Okay, so we actually have a motion too on the floor to approve it and then bring it back. So I.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you, but I can't hear, I can't make out anybody else that's talking. So thank you.
You can't hear me though, correct?
I can hear you. Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, Joan made a motion to, to take the consent calendar as is, but to bring back that, as at the next city council meeting. So we have a motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be a part of the motion. All, all it has to do is for you, all it has to happen is for you to direct him. Cause the council's already decided on it, consensus. All, all that matters is that you would direct the city manager to do that after we, um, approve the consent agenda.
Gotcha. Perfect. Okay. So we have a motion with that.
Middleton, I'll second.
And we have a Joan Smith Freeman motion and a second by Corey Middleton. We will go into roll call. Joan?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Debbie?
Hi.
And I, Duane K, I. So that is, the motion is carried as a consent calendar as, as presented. And we will have requested, um, city manager bring that back at the next September meeting. Okay, so we are on to number six. Discussion possible action point. Debbie Baird, as an alternate voting delegate in to twenty twenty one annual league of cities, conference to be held in September twenty second, twenty fourth in Sacramento.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Joan Smith Freeman, city council member, and I would like to vote. I would, excuse me, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Debbie Baird as the alternate, uh, voting delegates to the twenty twenty one annual league of cities, CalCities, uh, annual meeting. Uh, she and I have worked together on, uh, League of Cities and she does a great job. So I'd like to make that motion.
Alrighty, we have a motion and I'll, I'll second the motions. Duane K, I'm second. So go into roll call.
Hi.
Joan Smith Freeman? Corey Milton?
Hi.
Paul McCoy?
Hi.
And Debbie Baird?
Hi.
And I, Duane K, hi. Alrighty, we move on to number seven, new business. Seven A, discussion possible action, recommendation of award. Approved resolution authorizing city manager to award construct, a construction contract to SNL Group Incorporated, for the Main Street Sewer Interceptor project of the amount of four million, two hundred and twenty five thousand, five hundred and ninety five dollars. For, that's a lot of numbers for the base bid and to execute related documents. Cindy?
It's a big project.
That's a big project. That's a big chunk of money.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me?
No.
Yes. No?
No.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Alright. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, we went out to bid for this project on July twenty ninth. Um, we've had some time to review the documents. And city staff has evaluated the bidder's license status, bid bond and insurance company. We believe the bid amount is reasonable, given the current costs of labor and materials, and we would like to, recommend that provisionally pending the city attorney's approval, that the city council approve the attached resolution to award the bid to SNL Group Incorporated. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Um, just actually, I, I'm sorry, if anybody, does council have any questions or?
Go ahead. No, we've been talking about it a while.
Yes, we have. I guess my only question is, since we have Dawn on the line, that, this is something that it's going to go through him, I assume. So we can make sure it all, everything is properly credited to everything. So.
And I believe we have a grant for this, correct?
This is the USDA loan.
Yes.
A loan.
Yes.
Yes.
However, we came in just under the top cost estimate. So we're very happy about that.
Good. Good. So Dawn.
We also have, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, we do have this concurrence from Pace who also reviewed the documents.
I saw that. That's great. So.
So Dawn, can you hear me?
I can.
And this is something that you're going to or already have looked into to make sure everybody's properly credited and have their proper licensing and everything?
In, uh, indeed, I, uh, before I went on vacation, I went over the bid package. To the extent that it had been completed. Um, there were, uh, there was one correction and there were a couple more, uh, boxes to check that, uh, still needed to be looked into by city staff. Um, and, uh, once I check over those two little items, I, I independently checked, uh, the contractor's license and, and another item, uh, there's two more items that I need to double check. And, uh, uh, God willing, um, tomorrow, uh, we'll be in a position to assign.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Don. Appreciate you looking into that.
You bet.
Getting that handled, even though you have, uh, had a crazy week here, a good week. I'm, I assume you had a good week.
Yeah, it was, um, it was better than working.
Look how tan you are.
Yeah, I really am.
All we get is fluorescent light.
Yeah. Is anybody else have any questions?
Um, Mayor K? If I may?
Yes, please.
Uh, my only, uh, comment would be, I thought, I just heard our attorney say he's got two more things to check. So, um, you know, when we have the motion, I would like to have the motion include that everything is.
Upon completion. It is, madam, um, councilman, when it is in the resolution that it's provisional pending the city attorney.
Good. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
I actually read that.
Good job.
Take effect immediately. But it does say this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
This is true. It's a little bit of verbiage, but.
I promise you, we're not going to send the letter until everyone's happy.
Alright, is there anybody?
Mayor K?
Yes, please. Mr. McCoy?
This is Councilman McCoy. How many bids were there?
There were two, Councilman McCoy.
Okay. And what does the amount is reasonable? Does that mean they were the lowest? Or what, what, what is the, what does that mean? You said the amount is reasonable.
It's under, comes in under the.
It, it came in under the higher estimate.
So the actual, uh, wording used in, um, public work contracting is, the lowest responsible bidder. So this was the lowest bid. And after we check out these last two things, it'll be a responsible bid and this will be the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you, attorney, uh, Henyon. And then when would we be looking at, um, pulling the trigger on this and starting the, the work? What's the earliest?
We, we can send an award letter and then proceed with dealing with the contract documents as soon as the city attorney is happy with everything.
Did you, did you hear that? Mr. McCoy?
And, yes, and, and then when would we proceed with work? That's what I'm asking. After that's done, when would we proceed with the physical work? Would that be next spring or summer?
When, when is the estimated time of starting the project is what McCoy's asking?
As I understand it, it's as soon as possible once the contracts are completed and we have our notice to proceed.
So we can move forward as soon as possible. Yes. Okay.
That's what I understand.
Did you get that, Paul?
Thank you.
We can proceed forward as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Is there any other question?
Already in place and ready also.
Reta would need to speak that more than I can. I believe it is. I don't know where Reta.
Reta, is the gap loan ready?
Um, there's still a few things on the gap loan. Um, I've reviewed draft documents today. We're setting a closing date on that. Probably being a big banner bank, um, DDA account's been established. I met with Bob Patterson this morning from Banner Bank, who drove up from Sacramento. And, um, so I'm expecting closing next week sometime.
Oh, that's great. That's plenty of time. Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, um, because this, okay. I'd like to, uh, let's see, I'm on the wrong page. Bicycle tour. Where are you at?
Okay, uh, go ahead. Okay. I'll make the motion that council approve resolution authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract, to SNL Group, Inc., for the Main Street Sewer Interceptor project in the amount of four million, hundred and twenty five thousand, hundred and ninety five dollars for the base bid and to execute related documents, as soon as possible.
Pepper Baird, on second?
Alright, we have a motion for the second roll call. Joan Smith Freeman?
Hi.
Mr. Milton?
Hi.
Mr. McCoy?
Hi.
Debbie Baird?
Hi.
And I, Duane K. Now we will go on to seven. E, special possible action, human resources, public works, adopt resolution of the city council, of the city of Warrica, making necessary findings, pursuit of governor code, government code, section seventy five, twenty two point fifty six, for post-retirement employment of Michael Moore, and directing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such employment together with any and all other unnecessary, excuse me, documents. Alright.
Randy is, is Randy or Matt Freeman?
Randy is, Randy is here.
Alright, Randy.
Yes, this is a person that you've had in your department for some time who is retiring. He has, uh, excellent grades, uh, for wastewater treatment plant and what we're trying to do is retain him for a while to help train others who are there. Are there any questions? From the council? I think it's good things. We can keep moving forward in a, in a positive way because this is something that, uh, we don't want to get caught, uh, in, in trouble with. That's for sure. This is a real crucial thing.
Right. We have to have three licensed class, two and three operators. So I'll make the motion to approve. This is, uh, council member Joan Smith Freeman.
Council Middleton, I will second.
Alrighty, so we have a motion in a second. Roll call. Joan Smith Freeman?
Hi.
Corey Milton?
Hi.
Mr. McCoy?
Hi.
Debbie Baird?
Hi.
And I, Duane K. Alrighty. Seven B's. Great. Now we can move forward. Crucial one for our future of our city, for sure. Alrighty, let's go on to seven C, discussion possible action. Excuse me, try again, try D. Geez. D, special possible action, strategic plan review. Request further direction regarding city of Warrica strategic plan.
Actually, we are on seven C.
Oh, I did skip it, didn't I? There's too much to human. I'm sorry. And that's a crucial one.
Yeah.
Let's try it again. Seven C, discussion possible action, human resources. Police department adopt resolution of the city council by the city of Warrica, updating the classification description, for the position chief of police. Yes, I think that was one of the. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, in reviewing this with the current, um, chief, and with, uh, human resources, it was determined that there isn't a realistic career ladder, uh, through the positions in the police department management. By making the changes suggested, which is adding the bachelor's degree, request, not requirement, and adding the, uh, lower level of experience from that of lieutenant to sergeant, we're making a lot more people eligible to apply for this position. That doesn't necessarily mean that people applying at a lower level of, uh, experience or education are going to get the job. It simply means more may apply. You're still going to be looking at whoever is your best candidate. We recommend this change we made.
Randy, is the, uh, completion of a bachelor's degree specifically going to say in a related field or can, be in any, any, uh, area of expertise, arts?
I apologize, but my earbud just took a walk. Let me get it so I can hear you.
Oh, how did you get that? Okay, Randy?
Oh, I thought it fell off.
Yeah. It took a walk. I'm waiting for it to come back. Okay, Randy, you ready?
Uh, no, but go ahead. So I'm listening, listening through my right ear now.
On the bachelor's degree, is it to be specifically in a related field?
Like, it says a bachelor's degree is desirable.
But in what field?
It doesn't matter. At that point in time, what you're literally looking at is the ability of somebody to enter college and complete college work and you're seeing the results of, you know, higher education. If you want it to be changed to say, in a related field, we can certainly do that, but it wasn't felt necessarily. Yeah. And I don't have the document in front of me right now, so I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't see it.
Would that be an advantage to say in a related field?
I believe that's up to the council, but I think a related field probably would be helpful. Just like you would do with any other job.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Related to that, but even if they have a bachelor's degree in a related field or not, they still have to go through the post program where they're trained to be a police officer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thanks.
Yeah, they still have to go through all the credibility classes and everything else that you would normally.
Okay, but this is specifically for a police chief. And if they haven't come up through the ranks or have the experience, I would be concerned.
Well, yeah, there's, at this point, they would, cause like I was saying, stating in here too, that they have to have that sergeant, classification too. So with that sergeant classification, they've already went through all those steps anyways.
So they wouldn't make the cut for the candidate if they apply and don't have those ranks.
Right, exactly. So, so you basically by saying this, they, they've already reached these steps. They have to.
This, this Councilman McCoy, if you, I think if you, uh, say in a related, then you, you're still going to have a very, fairly broad area, but, also I believe you're going to ace out certain people that are either civilian or that are coming out of the military that may not have law enforcement, but they may have an armed forces, background and an armed for, a bachelor's from armed forces university that isn't related, but they want to go into law enforcement. And so I think it should probably stay just a bachelor's degree.
I, I, I agree. I think it's fine just the way it is.
Okay.
Sounds good. I'll make the motion.
Yeah. Well, I've got, I've got a question on it there. I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Smith Freeman. I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting you. Um, Randy, the, uh, we're, I, I don't see, I see what was written on the cover page of this, but I don't see any illustrated areas where, that, that are highlighted for the, the changes on the actual job description itself.
Uh, then I apologize for that. There was a document that redlined that, but it used to say, where it now says sergeant, uh, it was a lieutenant. So for some reason in the past, um, a chief changed the job description.
uh, it was a lieutenant. So for some reason in the past, um, a chief changed the job description. We're not sure whether that was done with council approval or not, to say you had to have seven years of lieutenant experience, which at that time eliminated anybody within the department except one person from being able to apply for a promotion.
And is that the only change then that we're looking at? No other changes in there?
No other changes is being requested, just that we're making it years of experience as a sergeant and that a bachelor's degree, um, is requested.
So what I'm wondering is, would it be possible to Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. K, to have this come back to us at the next meeting with those red lines so that we can see what they look like within the, within the job description? That's typically what I'm used to when we change policy or job descriptions in the boards I'm on, is we see it come to us and it's been redlined or black lined so that we can see what the changes are. So I'm asking for it to come back to us with that at our September, our first September meeting.
Okay, the only consequence that I'm aware of, of doing that is that it will daily delay the recruitment by two weeks. Um, other than that, no, there is no objection on the part of staff for bringing it back at the next meeting.
Either that or, or bring it back at a special meeting. We scheduled a special meeting.
Council member McCoy, I'm more than happy to give you the red line document. Um, this came out of HR, um, and not by my desk, but yes, that's correct. Normally we do the red line documents.
Thank you. So I'm asking that it be continued, uh, Mr. Mayor, at this point in time until we get the red line document, which is kind of SOP, and then, um, then we can vote on it at that time.
Although I'm just, I guess I'm reading through this right now, this, what we have in front of us, um, Mr. McCoy, I think it's, I think it's status on this. Is, is anybody else?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I'm just, I'm reading.
We don't have a.
It says, it's highlighted and it says right here, I care of law enforcement supervisory experience with police sergeant at the city. I mean, it's, um, what else am I missing?
I, I certainly don't, I don't have a red line, I don't have a, a highlighted or red line document or a black line document in front of me.
Now that we do, right? I'm reading that. I'm, I'm reading everything, so I.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So, Ms., Mr. McCoy, I don't, did that get, did, I guess, who am I going to talk to on that? Reta, did that get sent out separately? Or I guess I'm confused here because I think I got everything on here. I'm, I'm not sure. Is something, is?
I'm looking at the agenda that I, that my wife picked up for me at the city. So, are you looking at the same agenda or is it an online agenda, maybe? And I didn't look at that.
Okay, wait a second. Well, there's, yeah, it's already highlighted.
I asked Evan to come look for my left earbud that popped out.
I mean, I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not asking for anything that isn't out of the ordinary or isn't, uh, a, a typical thing that needs to be done. If, you know, if we need to approve it sooner, um, I would be all in favor of coming back together, say on Thursday or Friday for a meeting and, um, and, you know, looking at it again. We could, we could do it on a Friday, this Friday, have it done by the end of the week, or we could probably do it Thursday because this is only Tuesday, and, um, bring it back to us with it redlined and then do it at that point in time. So that we can see an illustrative, an illustrative job description.
Right.
The online does have the changes, council member McCoy.
Okay. Thank you.
The online does have the changes.
That's what I thought. That's why I'm like looking at it going, I don't see where there's a confusion. So, um, so do, I guess that, I guess where we're at is, um, Mr. McCoy, I guess, you don't have that? Do you have just the, the written or the typed out version? You don't have the online version then?
I have, no, I have the copy that I, that my wife picked up for me because I haven't. What? I, I didn't hear you. What'd you say?
It's on the floor. No one's made a motion yet, no. No, she started to when we were.
I would have.
Yeah, I, I, I interrupted her. I, I apologize to her.
Yeah, no, I'm sure it turned him around. No, and it's, it's something that, so I guess we're in a spot, I guess we need to discuss this because.
I have no problem with it. I feel like, uh, we've been notified. If you looked online, it's right on here. I would be happy to make the motion.
Okay, so I guess at this, at this point, Paul, Mr. McCoy, the, um, I think the rest of the council's comfortable with it because they're, they're looking at the online version, which has the papers on there.
Yeah, that's fine. I, it just isn't in the printed version. So I, printed version and online version should be compatible. They should be the same, but that's just what I'm used to in boards that I sit on.
Yeah, I guess we all.
I, I.
Same thing, you're right. So. But at this point, you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would make the motion that we adopt a resolution for the city of Wairika directing the interim city manager to update the education and experience section of the chief of police classification to include a broader spectrum of law enforcement program management experience. This will better attract a qualified applicant pool for the position and better support an effective career ladder for recruitment.
Right, so we have a motion by Jones Smith Freeman.
Council Middleton, I will second.
Second, Corey Middleton. We will call Jones Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Corey Middleton.
Hi.
Paul McCoy.
I just got to go with what I was taught through California cities, not having enough there, not being satisfied with what is written there. You don't vote yes and you don't say I abstain. I'm just going to vote no.
Okay, absolutely.
Because of that.
That's understandable. Thank you. That's totally understandable. Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And Duane K. Hi. All righty, and, um, we, I assume we will get that information to Mr. McCoy so he can properly look at it and oversee it.
It's already online.
It, it, it doesn't, it, it really doesn't matter at this time. You guys, you four have already okayed it. Doesn't matter what I think. It's, it's gone. So, you know, Rhett and I'll get together and I'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. All right, so we are on now to D, discussion possible action, strategic plan review. Request further direction regarding the city of Wairika strategic plan. All righty, is this, uh, I would assume this is Randy?
Yes, thank you. Um, and since this was mentioned at your last meeting, I did meet with some members of staff who said there were some strategic plans on the book. So I wanted to return these to the council and basically the question is, uh, do you want to use these documents to start? Or do you want us to keep looking for other things? Um, and then hold a meeting in the future to dialogue how to form a strategic plan. So this is nothing more than an introduction.
Correct. So, uh, obviously, I think, well, I'll let the rest of the council speak first and we'll voice in my opinion.
Joan, you want to speak first?
Uh, the strategic plan was done in, uh, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, I believe. And, uh, we had full, uh, we had the council at the time, back in twenty-ten and twenty-eleven, were all there as well as, um, all of our, um, all of our city leaders.
We weren't here for that. I wasn't here for that one.
Twenty-ten. Oh, what happened to the one that happened? Wait a minute, Randy.
It's on here, it's on here too.
Oh, okay.
So it was a twenty, sort of twenty-two.
Here's the one from twenty-eighteen.
There you go.
So that was the one and we had it, um, over at the, um, over at the county stage offices. And, uh, we had, uh, boy, we had a whole, a whole room full of people, including a couple of members from, um, uh, the, um, the county.
EDC.
Grand jury.
Oh, yeah, the grand jury.
EDC was there.
Because that was a police station.
There, all of our department heads were there. We had people from every department. So I think that that's a good place to start, the twenty-eighteen one.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jones.
No, go ahead. I think that that's a good place to start. And yes, I think that, uh, it's something that we need to update. It's twenty-twenty-one now. Most strategic plans are three to five years and we're three years out. So by the time we plan it and get it done, it'll probably be the end of the year.
Or spring. I'm good with spring.
Or spring, right. So I think that's something that we should go forward with.
Yes, I, I think, uh, are you, okay, I, I know, I'd let the rest of the council speak and then I'd like to, to speak my mind on it.
Um, actually, it was kind of fun to look through what we've accomplished and, uh, what is still achievable. And I would recommend that one of us work with Randy to let him know what has been achieved, what hasn't, and why it hasn't been achieved.
Um, yep, I'm looking at one-way traffic on Minor Street that we're talking about for six or eight or ten or twenty years.
At least, throwback on two thousand and ten because when we're on the Chamber of Commerce, we were trying to push for that back then, so.
And I'd like to bring that back. I'd like to bring that back for life, yeah.
So there's quite, Randy, there's quite a few of these projects still yet to, uh, be reevaluated to see if there's still a value to us because I know when I read through the twenty-ten strategic plan that some of them are not current and relevant to the needs that the community have currently going on. So I'm hoping that someone will work with, uh, you and streamline where we are.
And then go forward.
And then go forward.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, what I recommended when this first came up was that you allow me to work with the department heads and then come back with you, uh, a list. And I, I, I still see that as a viable option. I take if you want, uh, those documents in front of you, back to the department heads, get their comments, and then bring all of that to you. And then I think you have, uh, the professional opinion of those who have been and are still working in Wairika to add to the comments of a previous council. Certainly, nobody anticipated the situation or problems or whatever of some of the major issues that you're facing at the moment. And those need to be added into your strategic plan.
Mr. Middleton, do you have any comments?
I, I'm sorry, Debbie Barrett.
I'm done.
Sorry. Um, I don't have any questions. I would say, I think it's a good place to start and a lot, a lot of this stuff was before me, of course. And, but a lot of it's still here. Like you said, that hasn't been done, so. That we've, we've talked about actually, so it's not like I'm out of it because I'm reading some of this. I'm like, gosh, we've talked about this. And so when you have the data, I was like, okay. Um, so I think it's a great place to start and, uh, I would like the city manager to go back to staff and give their opinions and come back and work with us on a few things and express it.
Right, as long as we don't lose, as long as we don't lose some things. Like, for instance, public safety construct restation. You have our new station, you can check that out.
That's a biggie.
But things that haven't checked out, let's not lose them.
Yeah, that's, that's why, I think, uh, Mr. McCoy, I'm sorry, Middleton, are you?
I'm done.
Okay. Mr. McCoy, do you have something to talk, please?
No, I just, I think that we probably need to relook at the two thousand eighteen goals and use them as a way to, to, uh, uh, move through our next strategic planning session.
So, yeah, I think this is a good, getting back to me, I think this.
Yeah, I mean.
What's that? I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying, I think we just go ahead and start planning strategic, you know, for strategic planning and, and, um, look at what goals we've accomplished and then, you know, because there are reasons why we've accomplished some and why we haven't. Like annex Philippi property in the city limits, part of that is money, a million and a half dollars, you know. It's what I think is what city manager Baker said it was going to take to annex it in to get it totally annexed in. I don't know if that was water and sewer and stuff like that or what.
Yeah.
You know, so I think we need to look at what's, uh, what's been done, what's still to be done, and what's not relevant.
I agree.
And then push forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, yeah, basically with twenty-eighteen's a good place to start. I think we do need to, um, possibly just review the older stuff just to look at it because there is, it's amazing, you know, I went through all this a couple of times now, three times, and some of the stuff that we actually did, you know, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, we've done through the years, twenty-eighteen, actually, there was actually quite a few little things that we did, uh, move forward on in twenty-eighteen from the strategic plan goals that we set back then, which is pretty cool. And when I went through it and going, wow, okay, we did do that. No, we did move forward on that. Okay. So there is stuff that we did, um, move forward on and did, uh, develop and do this proper movement, movements on it, but it's, is a good starting point. Um, I think, just like we talked about before, um, there, times change and we change, priorities change as a city. And I think we need to readdress some of these again, for sure, even the ones that are on there that we did complete. We might want to look at them and just say, is that at the level of completion that we, um, anticipated? Is this that, at that level or did we expect it to go to another level? So these are some things that we need to address too. Um, there's a number of things like, well, looking at this, Park Host was Camp Host, we called it Camp Host then, but it was actually Park Host. We need to address, is that, is that something that, as at the level that we expected that? So these things that we looked at in twenty-eighteen, we need to figure out if that's what we expected from those things too.
And, and annexing that Philippi property, we've been talking about that for a long time, so.
So we actually started the, I don't, Rusty, remember, we did basically start that, um, progress, uh, that purpose in, in doing that, we actually, um, um, annexed it into, or started the progress into agricultural land.
I don't think it's been done.
We did a wetland study.
We did, yeah, we did a study.
Okay.
We haven't actually annexed it yet.
No, and I annexed it in, I know we were supposed to start making, I don't know if Steve actually did that, into agricultural city land or however it was supposed to be worded. So there is stuff like that.
Send your map with them.
Okay, so it's something, that's something that, yeah, we'll have to just bring back to, to see where we are with that. So anyways, I guess the next step would be in this is when, we don't want to lose momentum because we are losing some key players that have a lot of knowledge as far as city staff on this, just like Randy was stating that he wants the city staff to give him direction. I mean, as far as what we've done, what we haven't done. So I think it would be crucial to move forward in a timely manner on that, um, uh, instruction on how we have moved forward. I think I still go back to, like you said, Debbie, that one of us should also be, um, talking with him on this in conjunction to city staff too, just because not always, um, did we move forward with the city staff on certain things, but he also needs to know why we are moving forward on these issues, you know. Because I think especially the two thousand eighteen one, the three of us, you know, were there for, for those sort of things that we've stated on this, um, as far as moving forward. So I think it would be crucial for us, one of us at least, to sit in with, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Johnson and, and advise him what were our thoughts were on that and what the direction, what we thought was supposed to go in, so.
Right, and two council members can do that.
Yep. I'm, I'm totally for that. So what's the rest of the, uh, council thinking on that? Should we have that direction as far as, say, two councilmen then?
I'm good with one, to tell you the truth. I don't, I'd be more than happy to be one of the two. It doesn't bother me. I have flexibility in my schedule, but a minimum of one.
I do as well, so I'd be happy to help.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McCoy, what is your opinion on that?
I would agree with two, and I think it should be the mayor and the mayor pro temp. I would agree with two.
All righty, then. Did you get that, Mr. Johnson?
I got it.
So we have direction on that. So we would like for you to set up a meeting with your staff and then set up a meeting with Debbie Barrett and I, and we will move forward on that. And then we'll be able to come back with, uh, a future date on, on the strategic plan and development of it for the next goal setting. Great.
Thanks.
And it's not emergency, sir, so we don't have to do it within the week.
No. No, but we do definitely need to move forward before we lose our valuable staff.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, now we are on to the seven. Okay, now we are on to the 7E, which is discussion possible code of conduct review, review of the conduct, uh, used by city of Coleman. Now, I brought up this, and I don't know if the rest of the council wants to move forward, it's fine. I would like to bring this back up in future discussion, because there's a few things that I would like to talk to, um, I'd like to talk legal, and I'd like to talk to, um, some individuals on this situation, so. But it's entirely up to the council, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. There's a couple of things that I'd like to discuss before we move forward on this, um, and I.
Well, Randy was going to introduce this, I believe, right, Randy? But I'm happy to talk about it. The point being is that most cities have a code of conduct. It's not like this is something new, and this is for the future. It's a policy for the future for all council members and, um, also our department heads. You can see here, now, Debbie and I looked at, uh, at least four of them. Some of them are two pages like this, or three, and some of them are 30 or 40. I think Mount Shasta's is like 50 pages. I'm not sure we need that many pages. But, uh, this, it's just a general overview about, um, council members and staff, and it's talking about being fair and impartial, honesty, integrity, and professionalism, and all the things that I feel are so important for our council members, uh, and as well as our department heads to, to be. So, not going over and beyond, it's pretty much what, what we, what we as council members need to.
And we weren't, if I may?
Yes.
We weren't planning on making any decisions with this tonight, it's just, uh, first review and, like, everyone actually take it home, edit it, bring it back.
Right.
Um, that kind of thing.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm all for some type of code of conduct. I'm not, like, I'm disagreeing with it, there's just a couple of things that I would like to get cleared up, cleared up, and I'd like to talk to Dawn, and I'd like to talk to, um, a couple of individuals on this, just because, like you said, you guys did the research, so I'd like, I didn't get a chance to really review and completely, so I would, yeah, I would like to, just like I said, bring it back up, I mean, that's, that's great.
Absolutely, and our attorney, I've spoken with Dawn, too, um, and, you know, he's on board with it, but he hasn't, he hasn't reviewed it. I mean, I sent him a copy of it before we looked at it. So Dawn has seen it, he knows that we're recording it, and I, he's unmuted, did you want us?
Oh, yeah, oh, sure, go ahead, Dawn.
I just was going to answer any questions that were coming to me. You know, I've drafted a number of these. This is probably the simplest one that I've ever seen. Um, so, um, I mean, if, um, I, I, I don't have any comment about it.
Mayor K, council members, as you know, I've been cleaning out my office and I'm running across all kinds of interesting old documents. In September of 2002, the city council adopted a code of conduct for elected officials. I emailed it to Randy on Monday, but he's been out six, so I'm sure he will pass that on to you and to Dawn. So you can see what we have now as our adopted code of conduct.
Oh, I think that's great. And, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like, yes, and, and Randy, I'd love to see that brought back to us. And I would love to see each one of us sign it. I mean, if that's the one we want, I think it's important that we have that, that personal bio.
Get to get something going, so I, yeah, I definitely want to review that.
So Randy, it's in your email for Monday, I can resend it if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor through the chair, I, I haven't had any, any machine to receive emails Monday, Tuesday, and/or will I tomorrow, uh, on Thursday, and I hope to come back to work. I'll review it then, and I'll certainly send it on to the council.
Mr. McCoy, do you have any comments? Obviously, this is basically getting, uh, tabled, or whatever you want to say, to the future, so is there any comments at this point in time? Paul, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, do you, um, do you have any comments at this point in time? Obviously, this is going to come back. Um, do you have any comments at this point in time?
No, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see the one Liz has. This one is not only for council, uh, that came from, um, Debbie and Joan. This is for council and for the leadership team, which would be all of our department heads. So I think if we're going to discuss it, I would prefer to discuss it in a closed session. I don't, I don't think we want to air dirty laundry in front of the world and everybody, um, because I'd already had a chance to look at this today, and it actually talked to a couple of people at City Hall in regards to it, so, um, I, I think it needs to be brought back, but I think probably bring it back as a closed session item, since it may, it may, it's going to be personnel related to us and personnel related perhaps to, um, department heads.
So, um, yes, I'm going to ask Dawn, Dawn, is, um, is this something that we need to bring back, or can we bring back in closed session?
It's a policy.
Well, uh, normally, no, but if, um, it is possible that, um, well, the, the definition of a city council member does not fit into personnel, uh, but the, um, uh, if you're going to be talking about department heads or other employees, then yes, um, you could bring it under a closed session item under personnel. Uh, that, that had not occurred to me. And I, and I see here that they are having a department head sign this document, so, um, you know, that's, that's, uh, a legitimate, um, consideration.
Okay, great. Okay, that's what I need to.
Yeah, Dawn, this is Paul, this is Paul McCoy, and I think the Coleman document is a good document, as is, I'm sure, the Waireka. Uh, my concern is that as we look at it, um, in order to start with the document, we've got to look at, you know, issues that we have probably within the council, and that could also be issues that we have within some of the departments. If, if in fact they're included. If not, and the council wants to do it just for themselves, and they want to do it in front of everybody, then I don't see a problem with it, but we would be airing some of our dirty laundry. So that, that's my thought.
Mr. Mayor, as long as we're talking about honesty, integrity, and professionalism, I have no problem talking about it in open session. Now, the leadership team, that was just something that we have looked at. It's not necessary, but something we can talk about.
Actually, that would be under the jurisdiction of the city manager, so the department heads aren't necessarily part of it. And I was thinking this was a, an effective, important document, simply because, a, a, and not making reference to anybody, just to date forward. So it has nothing to do with anybody specifically.
No.
It's a general policy. So I'm looking forward to reviewing what Liz found. It's not about anybody.
No. Okay, um, if there's any more comments? Okay, so I guess at this point in time, then we, um, obviously need to bring it back with the, um, the information that's been presented, that hasn't been presented to us by Liz Casson. And then we, at that point in time, we can make one more review of what we want to, how we want to proceed forward at that point in time. But this, at this time, it's just tabled to the next meeting, to where we get this information, and then we'll decide how we want to proceed forward at that point in time. Still not a direction at that, at the next meeting either, this. We could give direction at the next meeting, but it's something that we'll have to address at that point, because we don't have all the information.
Well, as long as we get the information, like on the 2002 and before the next meeting, that'll be great. We need to review that.
Yes, we have to review it, and then we can bring it forward, so. All right, so this is tabled at this point in time.
Well, that table is continued.
Continued, to be continued. Okay, to be continued. Seven, okay, now we are off, unless there's any other discussion. We move to seven F, discussion possible action, personnel policies and procedures. And we have, who's up to battle on this one? Randy, is that you?
I think so, unless Reta is there and wishes to do it. Oh, no, she's on Zoom, too. Let me take a stab at it.
Everybody is on Zoom, except our chiefs, Aunt Ellen Arthur.
Randy, go ahead.
That was quick.
We're doing the shuffle here.
Oh, you do it, no, you do it.
Joan, you want to do it?
No.
Okay, the personnel rules and regulations of the city, um, I think I've mentioned to you once or twice, didn't seem to be current to me, didn't seem to be logically organized, and it's just something that's happened over time. Um, a while ago, Lieber Cassidy, um, a very good attorney firm out of Sacramento that does a lot of work with the League of California Cities, uh, was retained by, uh, I don't believe it was this council, by a previous council, to come in and look at those documents and organize them. For whatever reason, um, that project didn't, uh, end up with adoption by the council. So having had this explained to me, and then looking over some of the documents with human resources and Reta, I agree to recommend to the council that this be attempted again, and that we go back to that same firm and bring this to a conclusion. There is a proposal in your packet for this, um, to be completed. It would be a comprehensive, uh, approach to all the personnel rules and regulations, including the original personnel ordinance that the city of Waireka adopted in the 1970s. There are things in that ordinance that, uh, by today do not comply with a lot of laws. Um, and we would like to bring all that current, so the city isn't in a libelous position. To my mind, it's a very good idea, and the money would be well spent. And, and as Regal, uh, Rita pointed out, there is money for that, uh, in that fund that she sold. I apologize, but I don't have an agenda packet in front of me to refer to at the moment. Anyway, Reta, if you want to add anything?
He's muted.
I think that covers it all. Available answer, any questions you may have?
So council, I'm sure there's got to be a few questions.
Um, actually, what I.
Yes, Debbie Barrett.
What I noticed is, what I picked up on the most is, we haven't reviewed these, these since 1970. I think we're past due, and this is a good idea to move forward with. I agree, it's crazy.
So my, my question is actually for Dawn. How do you feel about this, Dawn? Because this is going over ordinances, will this take some of the burden off of you, too, Dawn, possibly?
Well, uh, we have the entire packet from this agency, and, um, so it, it does make some sense that if they feel, um, if the city manager feels that, um, legal review is, further legal review is required, and ordinance drafted based on their template, uh, that that firm do it, I would like the opportunity to look at what they put together and, and make sure that, that, um, I agree with it, so. As long as I've got some, um, co-counseling ability on this, I, I think it's a good idea, sure.
And I, I tend to agree, that's why I asked, that's why I was asking on this, Dawn, because I would, I feel the same way that I, I feel that you should have, kind of, a final review on some of this stuff, too, especially when it comes to certain ordinances, um, the, the, uh, amount of knowledge you have on a lot of these things would be, uh, well received, I feel. Um, Joan Smith Freeman?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Joan Smith, and city council member. Um, I agree, and I agree with council member, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Baker, because I think it is unacceptable that we have policy from 1970, because laws, personnel laws have changed. And, uh, you know, the state personnel laws is what we have to live with. And so I think that it's critical that we bring our personnel policies up, and I have no problem with our attorney, uh, reviewing that. So I would be happy to make the, uh, recommended motion.
Before you do that, I'd like to just ask us a council real quick, make sure there isn't any other questions. I'm trying to make sure everybody gets a chance before we do motions from here on out, just because I think it's needed that everybody speaks to the mic, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, nobody, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Middleton, is there any comments you'd like to make on this?
And I agree with everybody, everybody said. I want to thank Randy for finding, going through some of these policies and discovering that we're out of date on some of these, and, uh, so I appreciate that, for sure, so, thank you.
Mayor K, may, may I ask, uh, this is Council McCoy, ask a question of Liz?
Yes, please. Is there, is there anything?
Hey, Liz?
Just hang on a second, Mr. McCoy, is there anything else?
Yes, Paul?
Um, I, I was just asking for some history. I know that in schools, we, we, uh, look at policy, all 1,300 pages of it every year, and we, and we have a, a policy and ordinance procedure where every month we have certain things on the docket for board meetings. Is there not the same thing, usually, has there not been the same thing for Waireka as a city? That they would go over, you know, so much policy at each meeting, so you don't get it all coming due at, you know, one or two or three meetings?
Yes, that has been a policy in the past. We have made comprehensive changes, reviews, they've done, mostly been done by resolutions. Um, the policy and procedures are actually an adopted resolution from the 1970s. However, they never quite finished to bring it up to date. So, um, Mr. Johnson's correct. There are several issues that still haven't been brought, but over the past 20 years, we have been doing amendments.
So this would have to do then with, with policies and not laws, because laws come to us and we adhere to them, but we haven't, we haven't had our policies changed necessarily to reflect that, is that correct?
Well, it's actually both. Uh, we've got ordinances on the books that even though they're superseded by the law, they're still incorrect. So Randy is absolutely right, we need to get those fixed. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that Reta and, um, her staff have been working on this for the past five years diligently. It just didn't get completed with Mr. Baker.
And do we know what we paid them initially, when they came in and did it 10 or 11 or 12, or how many years ago it was?
Reta could speak to that.
Um, thank you.
When they reviewed the documents, um,
Yeah.
and our policies, and we started on, right, it was a free consult through our score risk entity, and.
So we didn't pay, we didn't pay them anything before?
We did not. Steve wanted to do it.
Okay, so I think in the discussion, um, uh, we need to change the last, uh, the last sentence. L C W is still agreeable and will honor that initial collaborative offer and take out the I N G, just for, you know? And that's all my questions. Thank you, Reta, thank you, um, Liz, and thank you, Dwayne.
That's my poor linguistic skills there, Paul, thanks.
So I, I guess I, I missed that, Paul, what was your, the number five, the L C W is what? Mr. McCoy?
I'm sorry, are you, is somebody speaking to me? I'm having a hard time hearing.
So what was, what was your request on that? I, I guess I couldn't quite hear what you're asking for.
Uh, to change the phrasing, uh, under discussion, the last sentence in the first paragraph, uh, L C W is still agreeable and will honor, just change honoring to honor. That initial collaborative offer, however, a new engagement letter is needed. Reta said she'd take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Got it, got it. Do the rest of council understand?
Yes.
It's the very first question, or paragraph that says discussion.
Yes.
And it says, and will honor that initial collaborative offer. It's just a little bit of verbiage, is all it is. I got to make sure everybody understands that. It's the very front, very first.
Right here.
Oh, well, honor.
Yes. Is that okay? Okay, something simple. Okay, and is there any other questions before we address a motion?
And I can make that. And I can make that motion to authorize the interim city manager to enter into professional services agreement with Libra Cassidy and Whitmore for review of the city's personnel policies and procedures, and be appropriate fiscal resources for project completion for an estimated cost of $12,000.
Yeah, we have a motion by Debbie Barrett?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, in a second. Joan Smith Freeman? We'll call it. Joan?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
And that's, one thing is that's with the verbiage change, correct, Debbie Barrett? I'm sorry?
Yes, but that wasn't, that was in the discussion. That wasn't part of the
Correct, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Got it, okay. And then, Paul McCoy?
Aye.
Debbie Barrett?
Aye.
And I, Dwayne Keg. All righty. Motion is carried. All righty, now we're on to number eight, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything?
I'm alive and well.
That's a good thing.
We're glad to hear that.
Yes.
And I hope to be back on Thursday. That's all I have.
Is there any staff reports?
We haven't got any staff. We have two wonderful chiefs here.
Two wonderful chiefs back there.
Everybody else is
And Ben's representing public
And Ben, thank you, Ben. Thank you for being here, Ben. Ask Cindy. Wait a minute, Cindy's gone. She was here.
We also have a city clerk. Is there anything, comments from the city clerk?
Yes.
Thank you, Arthur, for putting all this together.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, this is Matthew Bray. Hi there. Just wanted to let the council know, due to the, the weekly update brief of, that we sent out last Friday, I do not have a report this evening.
Yeah, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really excited if, the, I forget their name, if they're determined to be a responsible manager tomorrow to see that Main Street Sewer projects are rolling. It's been a long time coming, and that will be exciting to see him hit the ground.
Yes, it will be.
Yes, it will be.
Takes the pressure off of you, Dustin.
Well, it's, it's a project that's gonna be really good for our community, and it's, it's coming fast, and we got a bunch of other projects right behind it. So it's exciting to see it, it really starting to turn into reality.
And for people that don't know what the project is, Mr. Mayor, Ben, could you talk about it just a little bit? It's the sewer and the water.
This, this is the sewer project, but, so it's, basically, there's, as of right now, Main Street from Payne Lane to Lennox Street is, it's a really, really old sewer system that has these side finger collector mains that, that, that collect the businesses on each side of Main Street, and then slowly dump back into two trunk mains that zigzag and cross each other. They were pieced together at different times, so it's, it's really confusing and failing. And we're gonna have, there'll be open cut laterals, and then for the most part, the, the biggest center main that's existing now is gonna be either have a new pipe bursted through it, or cast in place lining, or it'll be lined and then open cut laterals to that. So for maintenance, it's gonna make sense, you're gonna go from manhole to manhole in a single, single main all the way down Main Street. And it'll be safer, because most of it's close to the center of the road, where the, the center link can be utilized.
Good. Can I ask him one question, Mr. Mayor? What was the van, the environmental van on Oregon Street?
National Plant Services in town.
Going into each one of the manholes.
Where, I know, where Seaton, it's like, what is that going on? It's freaking me out.
So their National Plant Services, they're actually through Pace Engineering right now, and they're completing the CCTV work of our system. They're doing about 100,000 feet, which will be wrapped up next week, which will, will be complete, the, our entire collection system will be completed, aside from just a couple areas where there's alignment issues out of manholes, and a couple things where it's just not feasible for camera access. But, so we'll be working, right now he's on the main trunk line that catches the south end of town and goes down Oregon Street, and then turns down Payne Lane. And then he's got one of the six inch collectors that's gonna stay in place, that goes from, it essentially goes from Oberlin and hugs the west side of Main Street all the way up to Black Fair Diner. He's got a section of that, and then we move to the 24 inch line on Main Street that goes from Lennox to the treatment plant. And that will be the wrap of the project, wrap up the project. It might be done by Friday, but if not, we and so that's been a lot of years in the making as well, and this is the final phase of it.
I was curious about that. I always get excited when somebody takes a manhole cover off, and it's not the city of Wyreka. Environmental plant people.
He's under contract with Pace Engineering and welcome in our, in our collection system.
Yes, Deb?
And I got a nice compliment from the fairground people regarding they had something go on during the fair, and they
Saturday night, an issue that was able to be resolved.
Yes. So thank you very much for the prompt service. I appreciate it.
Our own person got right on it.
On Saturday night.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Ben.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All righty, the other staff reports. Our two chiefs are still alive, so that's good. Two to the fire craziness and the, and the craziness period around town lately. I'm glad to see both our chiefs still hanging in there, so thank you. All right, then we'll move on to councilmen's reports. Start off with you, Joan.
Well, this was fair week this last week, and so I know that, that we have other council members that worked at the fair as well, but I worked at two booths, the Friends of the Fair beer booth, which took a lot more hours than I did there, but also the Elks hamburger booth. And there were three major events that night, and they back up to the, the inside of the fair, you know, where the shows are. So there was the redneck roundup, the rodeo, and then
Distraction derby.
And so, yeah, so all the money that Elks makes goes back into the community, to the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, and you know, they also help out with the, with the high school and the kids and the events there. So all the money that we earn, you know, after paying off the expenses goes back into the community. So I broke my fanny off, and I was just about broken by the end of the fair, but it was, it was very rewarding. And so consequently, I didn't have too many meetings last week. I did have, and I, Randy, I borrowed your office, but I had an online Zoom meeting, which was our, our local transportation commission meeting, and so that, that was a good meeting as well. And I have all the, I have all the documents here for you to read, if you were in that, about state ridership, which is down, probably because of COVID. And in March, we're going to be doing a study from the California, actually, the California Transportation Commission members are going to be coming to Siskiyou County, and we're going to pick them out and show them our votes. So Matt, I don't know if you know that, and Cindy, we're going to be taking them on a tour, so I'll be looking to you as to what would be good for us to show off in Wyreka, either our needs or our accomplishments. And we have an update on our active transportation plan for our county, and we also talked about the FAA grant, the Federal Air Administration grant for Reed Airport, and Taxi Way, and the design phase, and then we talked about CARES Act grant for 400, excuse me, $746,000 that will be coming back into our county for our roads. So there's some good information here if anybody's interested.
Anything else?
I know, that was, it was, that was, it was a busy week at the fair.
Yeah. People had a busy week. Great. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Ben Miller for helping me with an issue today. It, it wasn't my issue. It happened to be a citizen's issue. I was able to call him, get him on the phone, and deal with it, and prevent possible accidents on, on the Main Street sidewalks on the north end of Maine while I was coming home from the doctor. So thank you, Ben. I appreciate that. That is all.
Collaborative action, great. Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, it was a busy week at the fair. I did see Joan leaving when I was at Saturday night. I thought I was gonna have to push her out.
Did not abide.
No. She was, she retired at both booths. So Debbie and I were at the Friends of the Fair beer booth, which the funds we raised for Friends of the Fair goes back into the, after our expenses goes back into the fairgrounds for improvements, so so remodeling or whatever needs to be done to the fairgrounds, because our funding was cut, so it's very important fundraising, and we actually found out that we had, so it's been four years, but three years, three fairs because of last year's COVID not having a fair. Saturday, we broke record sales of Saturday. Crazy amount of sales. We were blown away, because it didn't seem busy, but it was just constantly steady, constantly steady. Not just mad, it was just constant, constant, constant. So it was nice to see everybody having a good time. What I understand is the animals took a record-breaking prices as well for the kids. People were friendly, people were tipping more. We donate our tips too, so they were, people were being very generous. It was just nice. The community, just, it was, it was great seeing people back smiling, and having that a bit back to our fair, because it's very important for a lot of nonprofits. So it was fun. We get a break from our daily lives of our careers and here, and so it was fun, and that's all I have. Now back to business.
We had a fair this year.
Yes, Cliff did a great job for what
It was a great fair.
It was great.
Except for the smoke and the heat.
Yeah, people still came out. We went in the 34 degree booth, the cooler. I ate my lunch in there one day. I did, I sat on a keg.
Debbie Barrett?
Same thing, lots of time spent in the beer booth and, well, that doesn't sound right. Donating time in the beer booth, and also for the first time, I volunteered in the information booth, and that was a lot of fun, too.
Oh, yeah.
And the LAFCO meeting was canceled again this month, so it's been months since we've had a meeting, and I'm the chair, I'm gonna forget how to run a meeting if they keep postponing it. However, I did get notified that we are now moving to the old courthouse supervisor chambers in order to make sure that we are not interfering with LTC.
Oh, nice. Very thoughtful. So we should have a joint meeting sometime.
Well, well, I've want, I've waited this long to say I'm going to the big house. So, but that's all.
Yes. Yes. Oh, yes.
The other boss, yeah. Yeah, besides her volunteering with you, she came up to you guys a couple weeks ago about the cone with the cop on a Saturday.
Yes.
And I completely forgot to bring that up tonight, but it was a huge success. It was, it was amazing. We went to all the motels and trailer parks in town, and some of the parks, everywhere we could find kids, and all the spouses put it on, the Wyreka Police Officer Association put it on, so I actually was involved. That's actually why I forgot about it. But it was put on as a volunteer by other members of the department. Community loved it, kids loved it. We had kids, you know, just yelling and screaming and running up, so it went very well, so I just wanted to let y'all know how that turned out.
And it was all over Facebook, so people appreciated it.
I didn't see what the tally was, but I went in the ice cream truck, we went up to Indian Housing, and I was talking to him at housing, we were waiting for some fire victims to come down. And I looked at his sheet, and he had hash marks for every ice cream, and he had a full sheet of paper, and it was filled all the way to the bottom. I don't even know if that was the second page or not. So it was amazing how much that we donated out.
And to be specific, it was ice cream cones and not big orange cones.
The biggest thing was the slushies, the ice, the ice slushies. That was the biggest thing. That was surprising.
That's something that's gonna happen next year too, right?
Yes. Yeah, they plan on making this an annual, annual thing.
Love to hear it. Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, there was great response on social media, just parents were thankful, the kids, and saw pictures. Yeah, it's great.
So I'll just add a couple things. We were supposed to have my point in time count meeting today for the seven counties of North State, and it, it got canceled too, so which was actually a good thing, because I had too much stuff going on, but that's still make time. It will be in September, we'll have a meeting, and then now we'll be moving forward on the, on all the dates for exact dates, and how it's gonna be handled, and we'll start the whole process over on how the form will look and everything else, which is time consuming. It's, anyways, that's, that'll be happening there. We have, we put forth, Paul and I, just another workshop, or, excuse me, work day at our proposed urban campsite, and we proposed that it would be August 28th, so it's just a little bit away, so we can have anybody from the public or anybody who wants to join in and help out, we'd love it. We'll put it out again on Facebook and stuff, and we'll get, see if we can get some volunteers again. It was a good turnout last time. We had quite a few members, a couple of them left already, but they were, they were there too. So it was great to see some members of the audience and members out there helping. Beacon of Hope was there, a few of their members. We got a lot of cleanup done. I don't know how many people was able to go by there and check it out, but it was quite a good cleanup. We did, we had a good, like I said, a good crew there, had people, chainsaws, cutting and cleaning, and we have one more, one more good, good cleanup, and then we'll be ready for whenever we get the dirt removed, so that's, hopefully we'll be hearing some positive stuff on that soon. I know Matt spoke to about, we have some brush piles out there, so I don't know if he mentioned it to you about that, Ben, or not, that there's some, we have three brush piles out there that could be removed if at all possible. We were gonna do burn piles, but it'd be better if we could just get them removed and not have to worry about burn piles at this point in time. That would be great. Sorry, sorry to bring that up. I know Matt, I didn't know if Matt talked to you about that or not, so I know he oh, no, no worries. I just wasn't sure, so I just, no big deal. We'll have, we're gonna have a little bit more, so if you want to wait till after the next cleanup, it's probably be better then. Oh, great. Okay, thank you. And then I'm not sure this will be something for Randy to check into, if we still have Randy on board. Yes, he is. We were supposed to get a key for that too, a lock and key, and I don't know if that's transpired yet, so last time I checked, my key or my lock was still the one on there that says City of Wyreka, but I don't know, that was something that was supposed to get handled, so that's something for you to check up on, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
And, who else was I gonna add? Oh, and then our last, our last homeless meeting, we discussed the, the three councilmen that were here. We discussed those locations and stuff of what's going on. We put most of the temporary spots, you know, on pause, which I get. But we also discussed the council getting porta potties delivered to some of the primary locations. Are we still, as a council, still comfortable moving forward on that?
I have a couple questions. It's all right. What's been hap, I would have liked to have asked, I would have liked to have asked our enforcement officer what they're, what they are currently doing about the situation. If you think it will be used and not be contribute to the problem with the littering and stuff, I would be in support of supplying the porta potties. But if it's going to be another issue with vandalism and trashing, I, no. We could try it and see if there, the problem develops, and then if it does, remove them.
Well, my, my big thing on that is, we have areas that have no bathrooms at all, so we obviously know where they're going. And that's, and they're going on city property, so I think it's our due diligence to put it out there no matter what. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, but as of right now, the, over there by COS, there's no public, you know, public bathrooms for them other than Lower Greenwood Park, and that's only there's no public, you know, public bathrooms for them other than Lower Greenwood Park and that's only accessible during the day. Um, it's not accessible during the night. Um, and it's not a pretty picture. So by not having something, we're also setting up for a possible cleanup too.
No, I'm, I'm good with it.
No, I think we need to I think we need to continue.
No. What?
I believe, I think we need to continue with that.
Yeah.
Move forward with it?
Yes.
Do you need to, it's not on the agenda.
No, but this is something that we did discuss, so it should have been moved forward if that's what I'm meaning.
Okay.
Um, it was a discussion at our last homeless meeting that we said to move forward with that. Uh, Mr., Mr. Johnson, did you hear with that discussion?
I, I did. I did.
Okay. And that was at our last homeless meeting. Does, was there any questions on that? Because I haven't seen anything move forward on that. So I wasn't sure if there's questions on that.
Uh, apparently the question is whether I heard you at the last meeting or not, and I did not. So I haven't asked anybody to do it. I will, starting Thursday.
Okay. Okay. So the, in those, uh, projected places, um, one is by COS, we discussed, um, not actually having it next to COS, but across the street. Cause it needs to be someplace where obviously the trucks can get to it. And it's a little bit more tricky for them to access, um, next to COS because that's COS property. And then down further is on an incline. So across the street by the oak tree, um, and that little flat area is probably the best access for them to put one of their porta potty there. Uh, the other projected spot was over there, um, off Oberlin Road on the Greenway. Um, because there's a number of individuals that are there. So that one, all I would, I'm not gonna make a recommendation, but I will, I would say that probably, um, staff and code enforcement probably could give the best recommendation on the location of that.
I thought there was a porta potty up there, um, on the Greenway.
No, we're talking Oberlin Road.
But Oberlin Road, Greenway part. I thought there was, as you go down there a little ways.
By the highway sign, the, the big
Yeah, there's, there is one. I thought.
That's where it was proposed.
I don't
Oh.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, then we should probably
Yeah. I, that's what it proposed. I mean, originally when we were looking at that as a site location, yeah. Um, that might be a little bit trickier because of the private property that, um, incumbents, the, part of that area too. So
I'd be okay if it was in the parking lot there though.
Yeah. I don't see one
That's level and accessible.
That's true.
Okay.
My only concern would be across the street is inviting them to, okay, there's a bathroom there. We don't wanna walk, moving their tents back to the same place we just No, going back to campus.
I'll go back to campus.
So we put across there all, oh, we don't wanna walk to the bathroom once we move our tent back down to where we just
Well, and there again, maybe that's something that Mark can work with, with, uh, with Willow Code Enforcement and, and city staff of, of Ben or something to find the best location. Cause if it can be put over there by COS, then that's great. I know there is a little flat spot by COS, but I don't know if that is actually COS's property or if that's city property. It's right next to
Starts just past, just to the south of it.
Right, correct. I just don't know. There is a flat spot right there is where we're talking.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's flat enough or a, a, uh, you can't tell by that map. You can't tell. You can't tell by that map. I drive by it, but I still not, I don't have the lines with me to, um, to be able to tell. So I don't know, Ben, what we can work with Willow and Mark on that, figure out the best location on that part of it.
Can I point out something then, please?
Yes.
I would like to draw them away from the campus.
I would too.
Okay.
I would rather it be closer to behavioral health myself.
Me too.
Yeah. That was, that was the whole perspective I give. Our last conversation was to try to draw closer to behavioral health.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Agreed. Better. Good.
And then the other one, I, you know, the, the bathrooms, do they stay open at the, uh, at Deer Creek all night long or they close at night?
Negative. Negative. They close at nine.
Oh, they do close at nine on, on the, those two, Ben?
Seven AM to nine PM.
Okay. In automatic locks.
Oh, automatic.
Yeah. I know they did up in Lower Greenwood. I didn't know if that was the case there. So
I'm wondering if this, I'm wondering if this is something, with all due respect, Mayor, that we might wanna continue as an agenda item. Go ahead and have them, go ahead and direct the city, uh, manager to work with, as you said, Willow and Mark to see which ones are the best routes, you know, which ones are the best sites for them. And then maybe the council could come back together, um, after they're dropped off. And if we don't like where they, you know, where, where we direct them to put them, we can ask for them to be moved at that time.
Yeah, I think like I said, yeah, we, they can move forward on it and then we can address it at that point in time. But I think we, on the, uh, Deer Creek location too, since they do close down, um, and automatically, I don't know if that's something, um, Mr. Miller, if that's something that could be changed, or do we want, just wanna put a porta potty out there too? So that's something I would, you know, if you wanna, um, Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure. So probably a port, porta potty would probably be a more feasible thing at this point in time. Okay. Well, I'll have, if, if you don't, if the rest of council's fine with it, I'll have, I'd like for them, uh, Ben and, and Chief Gilman and Willow to work on that along with Randy, obviously, Randy Johnson. And work together on that and figure out the, the best locations of those, of those locations. So is there any other locations that the council would see would be an issue at this time?
Three or four, correct?
We got three locations right now.
Okay. I would, I would, yeah. And I would be okay up without coming back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, what, if I may make a suggestion, if, uh, you'll just turn this over to staff, we'll have a meeting and we'll come up with locations and we'll get porta potties put there. After we've got them and we find out if they're working, or if the council at that moment in time finds out they're working or not, we can always adjust them. But if you give us a direction to put them in a particular place, that means we have, before we can move them, it's, it's not a correct place. We have to bring it back to the council to move it to a better place.
Understood. Perfect. And we'll, we'll give you direction as long as the council's okay. We'll give direction for, uh, Randy Johnson and staff to put it at the proper location and then bring it back and show us and let us know where they're at.
We'd be happy to do that. Also, any councilman wishing to comment, add advice or anything during this at any time, please do so because staff is certainly not an expert in these things.
We would, would love to have our input.
To the city manager.
To the city manager. Alright, great. Um, and I think that's basically all I had to talk about. I just wanted to get that cleared up and let people know that we're gonna have another workday over at the urban campsite. So if that in mind, we will go into closed session now. Thank you.